To the March meeting of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. We do have a really busy schedule tonight, so I'd like to invite Honolulu Fire Department to come up.
One quick reminder everyone, if you please sign in on the back and then when you come up to speak, would you please say your first last name? Appreciate it, even those who sit here recently, that'd be really helpful, I appreciate it.
All right, well, perfect, how's that going? Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Lee Marquez. I'm the captain here at the Waikiki Fire Station on ladder seven, we have parked outside. I am here to share with you the monthly statistics for the month of February as given to me by our Community Relations Office. So, let me begin. Our statistics for February, as far as fires are concerned, there were no structure fires. That's a great stat. No brush fires, nuisance fires, we had two. Nuisance fires are categorized by fires that include rubbish fires or vehicle fires or small fires outside of containers, like trash fires. There were four cooking fires reported, fourteen activated alarm calls. And those are usually from hotels or buildings, but don't actually involve any sort of active burning. In the category of emergencies, medical calls, one hundred and seventy-four. Motor vehicle collisions involving pedestrians, one. Water vehicle collisions or crashes, six. No mountain rescues. Oh, God, that's me. Real quickly, no ocean rescues, I'll meet you at the truck. And one hazard materials incident. Our safety tip of the month involves a smoke alarm, smoke alarms which, I'll try and rattle these off real quick. They are important, make sure you basically keep them checked. Their batteries, get them tested monthly, there's a button on there. Call our Community Relations Office and they can also come out and help you set up a smoke alarm in your home. Sorry to rush out the door, but I need to rush out the door.
Thank you. Next Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, I'm Steve Ono, the Police Department Waikiki District Six, I'm a lieutenant. I'm just going over some stats for the month of February.
Lieutenant, could you bring the mic up just a little bit?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, going over the months for February, I mean the stats for February. Robberies, we had four, the previous month was six. Burglaries, eleven, previous month, ten. Apps, one hundred thirty-two, the previous month, one hundred twenty-two. UEMVs, seventeen, previous month, twenty-eight. Assaults, forty-five, previous month, thirty-three. Sex crimes, six, previous month was one. Bike skateboards on sidewalks, zero this month, previous month was twelve. Speeding, we had nine citations, previous month was seventeen. Parking, we had one thousand eight hundred fifty-seven, previous month was one thousand seven hundred seventy-two. Loud mufflers, one, previous month was two. Park closures, thirty-three citations, three arrests, and the previous month was thirty-six citations, three arrests. Total calls for service, four thousand two hundred forty-six, and the previous month, four thousand three hundred seventy-eight. And that's all I have.
Any questions, Daniel?
Lieutenant, right?
Yes.
Oda. You've come here, you come here most often, right? It's been a while since we've seen you.
Yeah, actually, there's a assigned lieutenant that's gonna come, just that he's on vacation today. So, I had to come.
I remember a long time ago, you came like three or four meetings in a row. Am I right?
Could be, I don't know.
Okay, well, I-
I try not to, actually.
Well, one thing, well, that's just it. That's a problem in my mind, because we're having rotating police officers come and present. And when we address issues, someone comes up the next time and it's like, you know, here we are again, there's no-
So, there is gonna be an assigned lieutenant that comes, it's just that he having to be on vacation for this week.
Okay.
He's, yeah, he actually comes back on Thursday, so he's gonna be at the diamond head one.
Okay, great. One muffler violation. I mean, there was months, I think you were the one reporting, we had thirty violations in one month. And I think that was like three months in a row. You know, you guys just, are you not interested in the loud mufflers and enforcing the laws regarding the loud mufflers?
I'll bring it up with the command.
Well, see, that, that's the answer we get every time. And here we suffer day in and day night by loud mufflers, so you know, at what point does this neighborhood board have any influence or persuasion at all? You know, and this is something I think we could all do something about. And I think you guys are the people that do something about it. You've proven you can by having three months after I made a lot of noise of thirty-plus violations. And then, since then, they've dropped off, and tonight, there's one. So, it's frustrating, you know, I'm on this board to do stuff about the issues that these people care about. And this is something we can do something about. I'd like, you know, some actual real discussion and productivity between us and the HPD. Thank you.
I'll bring it up with the major and if you want, you wanna give me your number, I can have them call you.
I, I think one thing that's great is that because, Daniel did bring this up, this issue last time, the fact that you now are gonna assign someone every single meeting, it just happens, bad luck, he's on vacation. So, I do appreciate you are taking lengths and you are listening to what we're saying and finding some solutions. So, maybe moving forward, if you have a signed person, we can really get to the heart of the issue. So, thank you.
Go ahead.
And also, just to add to Daniel's, I, if you need a suggestion, I would suggest any evening or especially on the weekends, if you want it for the loud muffler, all you, Kalakaua is one way. I would just stand at the end of Kalakaua and Kapahulu. And you can get thirty citations in one day.
I mean, it's easy if you can just stand there, but unfortunately, I mean, we had four thousand calls throughout the month. So, we cannot just sit in one place. And yes, we do have downtime and everything, but, you know, we do have to respond to other calls. And, you know, you may see officers sitting in their car, you may think they're doing nothing, but, you know, they might be writing reports, doing other things that they have to do, so it's not-
We, we've had plenty of excuses, we got a PowerPoint slideshow with excuses, so you don't save yourself from-
Okay, well, I mean, there's nothing else I can tell you then.
Everybody, remember, let me wave at you before you start talking, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, a different subject. On Saturdays, frequently, there's vehicles driving on the grass at Kapilani Park. I'm down every Saturday morning for kickball league, right? And there's about four hundred of us out there. And it's regular that this happens between nine-thirty and ten-thirty. Other groups come down, they're to set up their equipment on the fields and they're driving older Ford F-150s and Dodge Caravans out there, and it happens every Saturday. Is it appropriate for me to call the Police Department, say, "There's vehicles on the turf grass on Kapilani Park right now"? Would that get a reaction, or what could I do to help solve that problem?
You can call.
Is it a 911 non-emergency?
I don't know if the city is issuing permits for that or not, but we can, we can always check.
Okay, that's good to know, so you can get a permit to drive a vehicle on the park?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either, so, okay.
There are permits that, that are being given out during certain times. I don't know if every Saturday is one of them.
Okay.
Like, when they have special events, there are permits that are given so that they-
Yeah, this is just regular league users that are doing this, so that's why I'm concerned. And it's dangerous for those of us that are having to watch out for that, okay?
So, you can call. And we'll check.
And, and you will come down by call?
Yeah, you call down, we'll come down and would, at the very least, kick them out and probably check for permits.
Thank you, okay, perfect.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Yes. Right there.
Rand Burke, I don't know what, what is their information, I'm brand new to this, so. So, to the noise, the muffler noise, I'm really hearing what this brother's saying here. As a resident, I mean, we hear it all the time. So, are we supposed to call, and by the time we call, it's done, so what, what's the solution there? Or do we just kinda go, "Oh, bummer, we live in town for us"? Or, I mean, I mean, in real life, what do you do?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, because by the time you call, they're gone. Ninety percent of the time, right? So, it's, it's hard, it's, and we don't technically have meters to, to to say that these are loud mufflers or anything like that. I mean, although, you know, you know, it's just, it's hard.
Yes, ma'am.
Gloria Steiner. I just wanna thank you for all that you do, and as another resident, I don't like the mufflers either, but there really is no solution when the person's down the street before you could even call them. So, it, it's a, it's a situation where, yeah, they can sit down there, but there are other things that I think are more important than worrying about the mufflers. If they see them and they arrest them, that's great, or they give them a ticket or whatever. But as, as a board, I would hope that there's more important things to worry about than mufflers.
Jacob?
Thank you, Chair, Jacob, one sec. I just wanna latch on to something you said about not having the noise, the proper noise meters. This has been an ongoing issue brought up, going back at least a couple of years now, as far as I've been involved in coming to these meetings. And one of the things is, who's supposed to be giving these meters? And who's supposed to be certifying these meters? And where does the funding need to come? Is it, a city needs to buy them, does the state need to buy them for you? Because this seems to be a perennial hang-up. So, we need our elected officials, someone needs to come in, cut the Gordian knot. I'm not trying to blame HPD, right? You guys aren't being given the equipment you need. So, who needs to give you the equipment? And who can we, the public, the board, pressure to give you the equipment you need? Thank you.
Are you asking me who's? Okay, honestly, I don't know if the government, as far as the city, has to get involved in this or what, but I do know they have to go through a vetting process, they have to get it certified and everything. So, I don't know who would be the purchaser of this. You know, like I said, I'll bring it up in the command, with the command, but I, as far as, you know, I'm only a lieutenant, that's kind of above my pay grade right there. But I'll bring it up with them.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
That be helpful?
Well, not at the moment, because all we would do is maybe send a follow-up there. But it's, this, it's an on-view violation, so we would have to like view it. Like, we could send a follow-up to the house, but if the bike is not there or the loud muffler part-
Or next year, when you, we could come up with some bill or resolution that when you get your safety check, then they check your muffler with your license plate and match them, and then-
Yeah, well, once the car is stopped, we cannot tell them to turn it back on, I think. Yeah, we cannot, we cannot do that.
I, I will say that we've been discussing this for about fifteen years. And none of your safety checks stations, including-
That's where it should stop.
Have a decibel meter. So, and there is nothing that the state safety check people, tell the safety check office or doers that this is the loudest noise you can have. They only say, it has to have a muffler, tailpipe, and equipment that came with the car. So, the laws that we've been looking at, that we're gonna look at tonight later on legislation, may help. But then, like the lieutenant says, each officer must be trained and certified with whatever equipment they give them. And, you know, it goes on and on, and, you know, it, it's a frustrating thing, I know to everybody. But then, let me have John for a second. John, if you could use this side, because it feeds back over here.
Just wanna, I know it's gone on for fifteen years, it's gone on for, I've heard for three years. I keep saying the same thing, and it's like beating a dead horse. The answer isn't noise meters, decibel meters. They've been proven, it's the easiest thing to beat in court. It's happened in Miami and New York, they had to throw them all out. Major Slater testified at City Council a couple days ago, whenever it was, that police cannot issue these noise violations on their own judgment. And there's no need for a meter to prove anything. And if there is a meter, if there is a meter, there's a meter, it's gonna be beaten if it ever goes to court. But the underlying problem is, this talk about meters and all this nonsense assumes that this is gonna go to like the O.J. Simpson trial. None of these cases ever go to court, no criminal cases go to trial. If a cop writes a citation for a noisy muffler, the person's either gonna pay it or not pay it. So, it doesn't need fifteen years to discuss it. Whether or not you have the manpower for it, I don't know, but I'm just saying the decibel meter thing is a non-issue. It, it's a stupid thing to bring up, because a good lawyer will beat that every time.
Point of information, actually, a citation, when you receive it, you actually can opt to go to court. So, there can be administrative, like-
It can be, it can be.
It can be, so I just wanna make sure that's clear. And by the way, your name?
John Deutsman.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, ninety-five percent of felonies don't go to court, they're all pled out. So, this notion that it's gonna go to court for, for a loud muffler, that's kind of a fantasy.
Thank you, everybody, Daniel, give it to us.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with John more. And in addition to that, we've had meetings, if you're new, you can watch all these meetings on O'Leiloe. They're online. And we had a meeting, I don't remember, but Chair Finley made this a topic for an agenda, a lot of discussion. And there's the law, I'm not gonna cite it now, because you can go back and look, it's disorderly conduct. It's like HRS 1000. And it just says unreasonable noise, you know, determined by the time and day and the manner of the noise. You don't need a decibel reader, you know, even if it went to the, you know, jury trial, all you'd have to prove is who thinks that having a race car-type noise at 3:00 AM in the middle of the night is reasonable? Let's see a show of hands right now, let's, the question, who thinks it's unreasonable to have cars blaring 3:00 AM making loud, obnoxious vehicle noise? You know, there you go. So, more than twelve people just raised your hand, there's your criminal conviction. So, so noise meters are red herring, you don't need a noise meter. I'd like someone to show me where it requires a noise meter. Can you do that, officer? Can you tell me one way or the other tonight, whether you absolutely need a noise meter to enforce the law of disorderly conduct?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Okay.
Anything with us? I had originally scheduled Officer Ryan Yamomoto to be here tonight. He's with the community policing organization, and they got called off to another situation. I'll have to check with Major Slater and see why he didn't come in tonight to talk to us about Kapahulu. I'll follow up with him next time for our next meeting. But we, we have had meetings with the concerned residents on Kapahulu. And I had hoped to be able to get information for them tonight. Anyway, I'll, I'll call and find out some more information on that. Next, Board of Water Supply, welcome back.
Good evening, Dominic Diaz with the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Apologize, I was sick last month, so I'm not sure if there were any follow-up questions to the rate study presentation, but I guess when I'm done, we can get into questions. Let's see, unfortunately, after a pretty good streak, we did have a main break in February. February sixth, twelve-inch main fronting 129 Pa'ulakalani Avenue. Brake was repaired, main put back in service. No active construction in Waikiki. So, just a quick general announcement, the Board of Water Supply will be observing World Water Day. This is March 22nd. It's an internationally recognized event and encourages water users globally to make a difference by changing the way we use, consume, and manage the use of water in our lives. You can go to our website, wwwboardofwatersupply.com/WorldWaterDay. And we've got videos of inspirational stories and documentary-type information on global water and sanitation crises around the world. We've also got tips on water conservation and how climate change is impacting the water resources we have available. And at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions on behalf of the Board of Water Supply.
Board members, questions for Board of Water Supply? Lady in the audience, questions, please use the microphone on this side.
Hello, I'm Catherine Lee, and I have a question about the fountains. I asked this a few meetings ago, the Tommy Waters, we have two beautiful fountains, one at the entrance way in front of the fire station to the Alawai and the other near Kapilani Park. And neither of them are functioning. Maybe you're not the person to ask, but I wonder if you wonder about it too? Thank you.
Sure, the fountains would be maintained by the city, so not the Board of Water, we are part of the city. But the Board of Water Supply doesn't maintain those types of water features. I'm not sure if it falls under parks or another city agency. I can look into that. For the operational status, you know, I'm not sure why that wouldn't be working either.
Dominic, is there a number to call if you see water being wasted?
Yeah, so anytime you see anything that looks weird, you see water coming up off the, out of the road, you see a broken backflow preventer that's just sort of dumping water on a sidewalk, even broken sprinklers, you know, irrigation systems within developments, you can always call 748-5000 to make a report. That's a general 24/7 line, and if it's during the working day, they can put you in touch with the appropriate persons who might be able to respond. Otherwise, they can take a message and they can forward that information at a later date for it to be looked into. Again, that's 748-5000.
Fantastic. Any other questions for Board of Water Supply? Don't see any. Dominic, welcome back.
Thank you.
And gonna learn from Ernie Lau. He was here last month and told us he was gonna raise our rates out to, and nobody complained.
Yeah. Right? I mean, hopefully people, hopefully they did a good enough job explaining why we have to raise rates, you know, I think, yeah, you know, actively, we're, we're kinda doing a, some cost analysis of recent construction costs and it's, you know, it seems like costs across the board have gone up, so we have no option but to, you know, keep up.
Welcome back.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anybody in the audience has a citizen's concern that is not covered on this regular agenda? Mr. River.
Hello, everyone, my name is Trevor Abarzua, I'm the president and executive director of the Waikiki Business Improvement District, better known as the Aloha Ambassadors that you see out there. I just wanted to provide an update, not so much a concern, I think it's actually a positive update. But last couple, few months ago, I did a presentation on all the things that the Business Improvement District is working on. And we just got one of those priorities and initiatives across the finish line that we're really excited about, and I wanted to make sure that you all knew about it before they were installed, before we announced them. So, as you guys know, and this might be hard to see, but the trash cans that are around Kohio Beach Park, at the beach, by the Duke statue, they're done by the City Parks Department. They're just not in good condition right now. You kinda see them here, they're graffiti, they're broken, they're overflowing with trash. Sometimes you see maybe people digging through the trash for food, and it's just an unsightly thing. So, we reached out to the Parks Department and wanted to do a public-private partnership, where we found businesses, or a business, to donate nicer cans and cans that could help prevent people from digging through them, prevent trash from going into the ocean and overflowing. And we're able to secure that donation. So, in July, we'll be unveiling them with the mayor's office, with the Parks Department, thirty new trash cans throughout Kohio Beach Park. And from the aesthetic look, we wanted to make sure that it had like a subtle art design. And the reason for that is because we don't want them to get all graffitied up like the other ones. And graffiti, people that do graffiti, they consider themselves artists and they respect other art. So, the likelihood of them being graffitied is lower. But as well as the Business Improvement District and our ambassadors committed to removing the graffiti, keeping them clean, and making sure that they prosper. But the other picture I wanted to show is the type of can. They're called Big Belly trash cans here. And they're kind of a national model, you see a lot of downtown cities using them. And the company's called Big Belly. They're rather expensive, so that's why we found that private sector donor. But with that, you see kind of the pedal on the ground, and hopefully the camera gets that. But there's a pedal, it kinda acts like a mailbox. The chute opens up, you put the trash in the chute, and then it closes. So, that means that people can't dig through, and again, it can't be all, the wind can't blow it into the ocean. So, from an environmental standpoint, this is gonna be a lot cleaner. From a clean and safe and a safety perspective, this is gonna be a lot better. And it's just gonna shine a little bit brighter at the park. So, we really thank the City Parks Department for working with us. We thank this private donor who, I can't announce today, but in July, when we do the unveiling, I'll come back in June and invite you all, when we have a date. But, but yeah, they've been a big partner as well. But for once, a positive update and, and something that we're really excited about, so thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Hi, I have a quick question. I saw that there is upcoming a resolution to approve a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, actually, for garbage cans. Is that addition to your project?
This is, that is that project.
This is the project.
Yeah, so-
The donors, isn't it J, um, JT?
Yes, if you wanna ruin the surprise, JTB, yeah. No worries, but yes, I will answer your question. Oh, keep going.
So, one of my concerns with, I did email Tommy Waters' office about, is that I've noticed that even though for the business improvement, for the, was it the transportation improvement, there's like three, like, or four improvement associations in Waikiki, all the businesses get taxed. However, I have a special assessment, however, it seems like all the, all of the projects and so forth seem to focus on Kohio, even though there's, like, the beach one, for example, that was all Royal Hawaiian Kohio. And there wasn't any for the Hilton, there wasn't anything for the, you know, Ne'er Torian, like. So, that's my concern, is that, I understand that your, the focus is there, because that foreign company with a JTP, they own the Royal Hawaiian, they own those businesses around Kohio. So, I can see why they want all the projects there, but it, but for example, this one, once after the donation, the city then has to keep up with it, correct?
Sure, and I'll, and I'll answer parts of those questions. So, the company that is donating them, so there's a difference. So, Keoya is the company, the Japanese-owned company that owns those resorts. JTB is a Japanese tour company, right? And they do business in Waikiki, they do tours for Japanese nationals and people that speak Japanese. So, they, the reason why they wanted to donate to Kohio Beach Park is because a lot of their tours center around that Duke statue and kinda bringing people to the beach and whatnot. Now, that doesn't mean that we're, we don't wanna do this initiative throughout the entire district. That is definitely on the agenda, and hopefully we could get more private sector donors to help out. The, the thought process was to start at the park because of the damaged trash cans, the graffiti trash cans that are there. The City Parks Department is the one that keeps up with those trash cans. The rest of the trash cans in the district, they're different cans, they're, they're more of a metal can. And the WBID, the Business Improvement District, is the one that services those. And we make sure they're kept clean, there's no graffiti on them, the trash is taken out regularly. I can't speak to the other organizations, the Beach CETA and the Transportation CETA. I'm the president of the Aloha Ambassador Business Improvement District. But Rick Egged, who I know is gonna be here later on, hopefully, he's in charge of the other districts. So, maybe you could bring up the, those parts of it, but, um-
I don't mind, it's great, I really appreciate it, I just had some questions.
Yeah, sure, and then again, I think the, the goal, the long-term goal is to have these Big Belly trash cans throughout the entire Waikiki. But again, these cost a lot of money, a hundred thousand dollars for thirty trash cans, it sounds a little crazy, but I think it's gonna be worth it, and again, if it's a private donor, we're, we're excited about it. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Trevor, appreciate it.
Yeah, Bob, John Deutsman, I just wanted to follow up on that question about Kehio Beach. Kehio Beach is our Times Square. Kehio Beach is our Times Square. So it's not some sinister plot by people who own hotels or whatever. Kohio Beach is the center of Waikiki, one of the most famous beaches in the world. It's also the number one spot for arrests. It's the most dangerous spot in Waikiki. Prime prevention through environmental design, I've been harping about it and successful with it for three years. This is another step. It's not about who owns what hotel where, it's about that's our crown jewel, it should be immaculate. And it is also our biggest problem area because it's a public area. That's what it's about. It's not about, oh, I own a hotel here, so I want to make my hotel nice.
Thank you, John. We have somebody online. Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question for Trevor. As far as the trash cans, I think they're designed to have some banner or some marketing advertisement on these cans. Is that correct? And if so, how is that administered? And who would, who would be advertising?
Sure, and we're going to have a sort of a subtle art wrap around them. They're not going to be, a lot of cities around the country have these flashy trash cans, right? And in Waikiki, we don't really do flashy billboards, we don't do flashy advertisements. And that's not what we're trying to do. It's going to be a subtle art wrap on the bottom of the can. It's not going to be their logo, but kind of like, uh, um, I don't know the verbiage yet, but, you know, provided by JTB Hawaii or thank you, JTB Hawaii, right? It won't have their logo, it won't be flashy. But again, I kind of had that picture of the art wrapper, an example of it. We're still in the design process now. It's going to be something that fits within the look of the park, maybe some sort of leaves or some greenery or a blue that fits in with the water. So we want to make sure that you kind of barely notice it when you're looking at the beautiful ocean or the Diamond Head. But again, it's not just a black trash can that really sticks out. So the subtle art wrap and it won't have the flashy advertisements or any advertisement for that matter, just kind of a thank you or courtesy to JTB.
Thank you, everybody. Is anybody else online? Go ahead.
Ashley Bailey, you can talk now.
There. I apologize that I can't be in person, but I appreciate the opportunity to address the board today regarding a critical issue that affects our community. It's the state of our road on Tucitala Street. My name is Ashley Bailey. I'm a licensed real estate broker and also an owner and the vice president on the Board of Waikiki Lanai's located at 2452 Tucitala. And I really deeply care about this Waikiki community. Potholes, cracks, rubble, and uneven surfaces not only detract from the aesthetic appeal of our community, but also pose significant race, safety risks to our drivers, cyclists, and the pedestrians walking about. It gets even worse after the rain, as we have all seen. And the deteriorating condition of our roads could potentially deter investors and new residents from choosing our area as their home. We really need this road shut down and paved correctly. I know that Melissa Felix brought this up in our last meeting, and I appreciate that. Investing in the road is not only just about aesthetics, it's about the investment in our safety, prosperity, and the future of our community. And I'd like to enhance the safety, boost property values, and support economic growth. Thank you very much.
Wait, um, did you say it's 2060?
2452 Tucitala, Waikiki Lanai's. We're right there on the corner where it meets, uh, I forget the name, I'm sorry.
Tapili.
Tapili, thank you.
Heely and Tucitala.
Yes.
Um, so I had brought this up last month, that that road is quite uneven and dangerous. And I noticed a day or two later that the city had come out and they just started pouring gravel and, um, filling, tried to even it or fill the holes. And then it just made it worse because it's even more uneven now and the gravel spreads and it's all over the place. But it's really, really bad driving a car down Tucitala.
I don't see our city representative here yet. When she comes in, be sure to bring that back up.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' concerns? Don't see any hands, I don't see any hands there. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, Rand Burke, I don't want to take up a lot of space here, but on the other side of the jungle on Tucitala, people are parking there all the time. And I'm like, well, why are they doing that? They get ticketed all the time. Well, there are no signs to tell them not to park, but they're still getting ticketed. So I'm wondering, I don't know what the disconnect is there, but it's like, it's the Diamond Head side, you know where the jungle is, right? So the funky roadside is the Ebb side, and then on the other side, it's like where the two big lots are. So it's, it's just kind of this weird no man's land, which is fine on some levels. But, I mean, I, I understand why people would park there and then they come back and they've got a ticket and they're like, what the heck's going on? So it just seems like one of those things that needs to have some attention, I suppose. I don't know if I'm causing more problems than not, but it just seems like a logical thing.
Thank you. See anything else? Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, next on our agenda is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections for the February 13th meeting? Yeah, go ahead.
So there's just one correction that needs to be made. And even though the vote reflects that the motion did not pass, it just says, uh, we just need to add the word "not" to, what section is that? It was the second vote after the call, the question, motion. So I like to make a motion to approve the February, uh, video summary pending the correction of that one error.
Okay, was not adopted.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's.
Okay, any other corrections? All in favor of accepting?
Chair, I'm Zoom, this is Greg on Zoom.
Sorry, didn't see you.
No worries. So I have concerns with the February meeting minutes as they are, just because, as you know, there's a concern with sunshine law violations. And with that, and the resolution for the Alawai Bridge, that poses a concern. So I, I would not be able to vote to adopt or support that, that drafted.
I need a motion to accept the minutes as corrected for?
I can repeat the motion.
February 13th.
Pending.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Mers. Any further discussion? By roll call?
Okay, uh, when I say your name, please say yes, no, or abstain, okay? Michael Brown? Uh, Lisa? Shotaro? Uh, Louis? Uh, Melissa? Robert? Yes. Uh, Catherine?
Yes.
Daniel? Ken? Jeff? Greg?
Abstain.
Okay. Uh, Mark? Chad? And Sarah. Yep, uh, the motion was adopted.
Okay, we were way behind on these. We have August 8th. Anybody have corrections for August 8th?
Did you receive my, um, my submission for the August 8th? Is that? Yeah, so actually, I did revise the version of the, um, the meeting minutes and was submitted. Did you receive that? Is that?
Chair, if I could, this is Greg on Zoom. Chair.
Let's hold on a second. We're talking about August, no? So Greg?
So I, if, if you recall, I had submitted in January for the January meeting corrections for August, September, October, and November. And Neighborhood Assistant, um, Anson Wu had forwarded that to the entire board. So all of our board has those corrections. They were then deferred the following month, and now we're back to it, you know, again in March. Uh, I did it a very, in a very clean and concise way, and that's what we should be working from. And I stand by what I did.
Sure, to be just speak here, actually, I really appreciate the fact that Greg Masakian took this on because, uh, like Lisa, my parents are getting older and I had to go to the mainland to take care of them. So Greg stepped up and actually, um, I did some corrections on the September and October and just, uh, September, October, November, um, meeting minutes. So those are the ones that were submitted and I, I agreed.
So to clarify, it's August, September, October, November, there's four months.
Okay, so do we do these one at a time or just as a group? As a group? Okay, is there a motion to accept the corrected minutes for? August 8th, September 12th, October 10th, and November 14th? Motion to accept the corrections? Okay, so Vice Chair would like to do August 1st, August 8th?
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think you've presented the minutes, correct? And I believe Mr. Masakian is making a motion to amend the minutes as presented. So that's what my understanding would, is happening here.
Is that what's happening here?
So, so the minutes have been distributed by, to the board. The chair has asked, is there any amendments to the minutes? Mr. Masakian has proposed amendments to the minutes. So therefore, I believe he has to move to amend. We vote on that.
Okay, this sounds like something I, I need to work with him on. So we're going to move on to. Area. I am, I'm very confused about what's happening with this, and I don't want to screw it up.
I don't think it's very confusing, right? Greg has distributed the corrections. He is asking that the minutes be amended. So that, good point.
Actually, that's, no, actually, point of correction, just to clarify, um.
I'm not sure there's such a thing as point of correction, it's point of orders.
Then Daniel?
Yes, there's no such thing as point of.
Excuse me, guys, quit fighting. I'm going to pass this on to the voice.
My, I mean, yes, yes, Greg did submit amendments for all of them. I mean, I think you probably read it. I mean, I read it, uh, first, some of them were, some of them were minor, some of them were not as minor, but most of it was not really a big deal. And I think for the sake of simplicity, some of that would, I think we just need to get this out of here already and be done with it. My issue was in November, I thought there are some, there were some gratuitous, cheap shots that, that were taken in his corrected minutes against Judy Ann, our, our former neighborhood assistant. And I don't support, I don't support those corrections. I think, I think he changed it to say she lied, or she misled, or something like that.
I, I, if I could.
I thought that was, I thought it was completely inappropriate. So I, I don't support, I don't support his amendment minutes in the, but I'm happy to support all the others.
Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as originally distributed. That's my motion.
Chair, if I could, to clarify the.
There's a motion on the floor.
Chair?
Just a moment, Greg, but there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Wait, you can't make a motion unless discussion is done. Discussion is not done, sir.
No, discussion comes after emotion.
No, uh, no, no, Chair, this is not being done correctly.
Stand by, everybody.
I second it.
Chair, you are, you're, you're in violation right now of the protocol for this because if there's corrections needed on the agenda that needs to be, that are substantive, you have to correct them. These are actual incorrect votes and things like that. And I take offense to the, um, the comment I made, there was an, because the NA, actually, I used the word improperly, took another vote. I didn't say there was a lie, I just said there was an improper protocol in a vote, and that's absolutely correct. Those were already reviewed, they're substantive, and they're accurate. And if you don't approve them, this will go forward to the NCO. This is just an abomination right now, what you guys are doing again and again.
Mr. Mr. Connie, my fellow board member, why are you threatening this?
Member Henske, I would ask for decorum, I would ask for decorum by every board member here this evening.
You have not shown any dignity. Now be quiet and let us get to a high-stakes.
Miss Henske, I am the most dignified person here in this board. Please, I'm begging you to stop the, the, you guys are doing a mob mentality against me for some reason. I don't know why, and I have done nothing but try to help this board and move it in the right direction.
You've threatened this board just now.
Yeah, that's very offensive that you would say that, Catherine.
I wanted to raise this protocol. And when somebody wants to speak, when somebody wants to speak, they need to get your attention and ask for permission to speak. For Greg or anybody else, just to pop in whenever they feel like it is, is not proper protocol. So anybody here who wants to speak, ask Chair Finley for the floor. And work, wait for the approval and then speak. But other than that, zip it up.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Motion, second. We are now in discussion. Catherine, I see you waving your hand. Do you want to have discussion?
I have no discussion. I think that we should get this out of the way. It's almost this, the same time coming up for them to be approved. Let us get this off our records. Do it as we originally saw it written. And if there's somebody who doesn't like it, vote against it. Thank you.
Further discussion?
So this is Secretary of this board. One of the big issues was the drafts I was receiving, the votes, the votes were wrong, the person who motioned was wrong. There were a number of errors. And now that NA is no longer with us, the one, I agree with you, Louis, Vice Chair, I agree with you about that one comment. I had an issue with the two, so I conferred with Greg and he had actually talked to OIP, and they had approved it. So I was like, okay, I mean, I agree with you, I would have, but however, if OIP is kind of our guideline, then. So the ones that were submitted, I reviewed two.
No, no, wait.
Were right. So those are the ones I would like to vote on, not the ones who have the incorrect votes and incorrect motioning.
No, no, I, I happen to agree with you, and I think, that's why I say August, September, and October. Greg did make some corrections and that, to make them more accurate. There were some votes that were, that were improperly recorded. My issue is it was the characterization of it in the November minutes, where he implied that somehow Judy Ann either lied or intentionally did it or something. It was, it was a mistake, okay? People make mistakes. And so, and so that, that, that's what I'm saying. So my issue is, is just that language in November. Otherwise, looking at all the corrections that he had in those minutes, I think he was right. I mean, uh, that some of the votes were improperly recorded and he was just trying to correct it. So I would say that, uh, but for November, I would take the minutes with his corrections for August and September and October. That would be, that would be my suggestion.
Chair, Chair, if I could, Chair Finley? This is Greg from Zoom.
Yes, yes, Greg, go ahead.
I, I'm okay if you want to strike the, that one section, and Secretary Worth knows the section. I wasn't trying to, um, do anything other than just clarify that it was an improper second vote. So I wasn't trying to, um, upstage or do. So I wasn't trying to upstage or do anything other than that. It was really improper. And that's all. If you want to strike that, then we've got everything clean. And then we can vote to approve and adopt. It's just the second vote, the comment regarding Judy Ann.
Okay, and board members, any other discussion on this? So Daniel, will you accept the motion as corrected?
Yes.
Second, Ken, will you accept the motion as corrected? I'll take a call, a vote on the motion.
I'm kind of confused. So what's this motion is to accept amended? Okay.
Chair, maybe you could just ask if there's any objection? I'm sorry. Maybe you could ask if there's any objection?
Certainly. Are there any objections to the motion on the floor? No objections, the minutes, the motion is carried. Thank you, everybody. Okay, next, we go to public events. On Wednesday, April 3rd, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, there is a salute to youth parade. On Sunday, April 14th, from 4:00 to 11:00 AM, the Honolulu half marathon will be impacting Kalakaua. Saturday, April 27th, 1:30 PM to midnight is the Waikiki Spam Jam. On Saturday, May 4th, 6:00 AM to noon will be the 45th Annual Visitor Industry Charity Walk. On Saturday, May 11th, at 2:00 PM till midnight, the Leahi Festival. There are several events going to be happening in Kapilani Park as well. Any questions on these? Yes.
So just to clear, because it wasn't clear to me, actually, that these public events are not just events for you to join. It's actually events that cause street closures or cause issues with the street being closed. So I think moving forward, when I do the video summary, I will add the time that the streets close, but then what the time that starts. Because there has been confusion about that. And also, you missed one event. There's, there's one more event that has a street closure.
I take these off of the city's transportation website. Okay. But the events actually finish at 10:00 PM, the night night events. But the city gives them two hours to clean up after the event. Anything else? Okay, applications for liquor licenses. Thursday, March 21st, 2024, Hayek Club, 1910 Alamoana Boulevard, Suite 1, Category 2. That means they close at 2:00 AM. Thursday, March 21st, 2024, canned sushi, 1910 Alamoana Boulevard, Suite 2, Category 1. Monday, April 15th, 2024, Ina Steak and Seafood is asking for a special license. That's usually what they get before they get their formal liquor license, and it's pretty much automatic with the liquor commission. That 1910 Alamoana Boulevard, if you drive by there every day, you'll see there's been work on the building over there for, oh, at least a year now. So they're finally asking to open and start doing their thing. Any questions? Seeing none. Okay, is Nola here from the mayor? Oh, there she is. Nola, were you here earlier when they talked about Tucitala Street? We'll have. He took notes.
Good evening, Chair Finley. Good evening, members of the board and residents. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm going to give a couple highlights from the mayor this month and then also respond to some of the issues that were brought up at the last meeting. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend, but I do have a list of all of those responses. So I think the biggest announcement that I think we're excited about is last year, the mayor started the program, this island-wide town halls. We did 11 or so of them last year all over this island. And he is getting ready to launch the 2024 version with 11 town halls all over the island. And so I think the one that probably everyone here will be interested, so the Waikiki District is included in the Manoa District, Manoa District together. And that will be on April 25th, Thursday, at 6:30 PM at the Manoa District Park Gymnasium. The one the week prior, which is April 18th, is going to be downtown at Kaikoolani Middle School. So that is also within the vicinity, but they're not really going to be addressing Waikiki issues. So the Waikiki issues are going to be addressed at the Manoa District Park meeting. So please join us, and the member will have all of his cabinet there so they can answer a lot of your questions directly. The mayor's newsletter, I think, is, is getting better and better every time I see it. But the mayor does have a new chief of staff on board, and he used to be the mayor's news director at HNN. And he is a wonderful guy, Andy Sugg. And he actually moved back, he was resident of Honolulu and moved back recently to take this position. He's just joined the mayor's administration staff. So you'll be seeing a lot and hearing a lot from him. There's a couple really other interesting announcements, not particularly with respect to Waikiki, but the city has really tried to make a big commitment to the LGBTQ and their community. And so we have a lot of mandatory training that the council has asked us to do, but also voluntary training for our city staff. And so I just wanted to let everyone know, for example, my former department, the Customer Services Department, is training all of their driver's license clerks to use a lot of the terminology, and they basically get trained up on these, on many of the issues that they interface with every day because they're public facing. We also launched the Office of Economic Revitalization, launched something called the Oahu Business Connectors. For those of you with emerging or startup businesses, this is like, they have like 70 partners, and it's free to anybody who wants to connect with them. It's oahubusinessconnector.org. And there's a phone number here and an email, but it's, I encourage everyone to visit that website if you have a business. It's a great place to get connected to a lot of our resources across the island. A lot of interesting things with the pursuit of happiness. We have been named, Honolulu has been named one of the happiest cities in the US by personal finance company Wallet Hub. And they compared 150 of the most populated American cities, and they examined key indicators of happiness that include emotional, physical well-being, income and employment, and community environment. And we were first in the category of community in an environment. I guess that shouldn't be too much of a surprise, but we also had strong marks for low depression rates and low separation divorce rates. So we are one of the happiest cities in the, in the country, although, and hopefully, everybody feels that way most of the time. Finally, I wanted to call out that you can sign up for city updates, hnl.info, hnl.info, and you will receive automatic updates from the city. Okay, so I want to move on to some of the issues that were raised last year. Some of, last week, month, I'm sorry, some of the, some of these look like they were continuation from the month prior. So a resident raised concerns that bicycle lanes and roads along Kalakaua and Kuhio need to be restriped. So the Department of Design and Construction, DDC, has three rehabilitation of street projects on Kalakaua Avenue in various stages. Each will include restriping and installation of pavement markings. So the first project is currently in construction, and the limits are from Olohana Street to Montserrat Avenue and from the Dillingham Fountain to Pony Moy Road. The paving work is pending approval of contractors' traffic control plan. So that sounds like it's imminent, we're going to start pending some approvals. The other two rehabilitation projects on Kalakaua are future projects. There's no date that's been set, but they are on the list of projects. The portions, well, the first one is between Veritania and Alaway Boulevard. And then the second one is between Alaway Boulevard to Olohana Street. And DFM will be coordinating the restriping work with the DTS, Department of Transportation Services, as part of those requests. So I think that's good news for the repaving and restriping. Another note, they noted that Kuhio Avenue doesn't currently have bike lanes. However, the Complete Streets Program will implement a new bus lane project in the near future. And as that part of the project, a part of that project, the bike pavement markings may be included. Currently, there's no DDC project to resurface Kuhio Avenue, but the Department of Facilities Maintenance has initiated, initiated a service request to restripe the pavement markings on Kuhio Avenue. So they will do that. At least the request has gone in. I don't, we don't have a time for that, but it'll eventually get into. The recycling, I guess, resident raised concerns about no recycling in Waikiki. Is it possible to get blue bins in Waikiki for recycling for residents or visitors? So the Department of Environmental Services requested a map of the recycling containers within the jurisdiction of the Waikiki Business Improvement District Association. I don't know if I get this here yet, but they did contact WVID. Albert probably knows about this. Director of Operations, Mr. Robert Lee, and they're waiting to coordinate with WVID to, that they maintain the recycling container. So I guess we will have some additional response on that in the future. But that's the current status of that response. Thank you. That, that concludes the report from the mayor. Questions?
Yes, questions for the mayor? Questions for the mayor? Do we have a hand up on the? Go ahead, Laura.
Yes, thank you very much. I received an email that wasn't really identified very well, that it comes from the Alaway Watershed Collaboration. And this is of concern to me because all of the stakeholders listed, missing was the very important Alaway Watershed Friends headed by Sidney Lynch and Dave Watase. Also missing were the Trees for Honolulu headed by Daniel Donnell. It doesn't look like it's really stakeholders that are involved in regular community activities. People that would be condominiums, people that would actually be along the edges of any of the streams, et cetera. So I do not, could you find out what this organization is, why the important people were not included? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. We'll pass that on.
Michael?
Yeah, Michael Brown here. Hi, Nola. I've missed a couple meetings, and perhaps you answered my question from a while back. It's about 207 Pa'ol Kalani across the street and the, the temporary Kiko high voltage connection to that building coming out of a vault in the pavement and held up by PVC conduit. Do we, do we know anything about that? It's, it's 18 months now. It's existed, and it's kind of shocking.
I recall the request, and if I remember correctly, they were going to take a look at it. And I can try to follow up. I'm not sure if there wasn't an issue with who's responsible between the city and the state, but let me try to follow up. I, I remember that question, and I thought we had a response, but I'll definitely look it up.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe you can email Chair Finley, and he can.
And I could email Chair Finley and connect to you that way, too. Great, thank you.
Other questions for? Oh, Greg, yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Nola. I'm, I'm going to ask you a question regarding the recent DPP pile permit event with Civil Beat that the mayor participated in. And I also participated in that. It was a little difficult to get on originally, and then there was some issues with it freezing, and a lot of people were complaining about that, but that's not an issue that you need to address today. I have some concerns, and I was sharing them in the chat regarding pay-to-play with DPP at my condo association, and I've already shared that with the mayor's office. I also have additional evidence of some other serious things, and we've got a lot of permits that are not in place or never were in place for very large projects. In addition, our elevators never had operating permits assigned to them. They were all inspected and failed inspection when they were rehabbed or, you know, renovated back in 2019 and 2020. They've never had permits, and we've had major issues with our elevators. We still have issues ongoing. So what I'd like to ask you is, and I've asked the mayor, I'd like to meet with the mayor. I'd like him to be more involved in the seriousness of this. It impacts a building that houses 183 units, and we do have a lot of elders here also, a lot of kapuna. Because I serve on Kukua Council, I'm now first, first vice president of Kukua Council. I have very serious concerns about what's going on, and I would expect the mayor to meet with me and others that I, you know, as I can bring evidence forward to him. I am in touch with Dawn, and I am in touch with Jiro, but unfortunately, DPP has done nothing to follow up. So I appreciate your help.
Thank you. I'm happy to relay that communication, and I'm sure that they will, someone will get back to that.
Thank you, Mahalo.
Jacob? Jacob, you had a question for the mayor?
Yes, I have two comments. The first comment being, we need 24/7 foot patrols here in Waikiki. It's not just, you know, doing, going after felonies. It's quality of life issues. It's getting to people who are speeding, who are, have loud cars, loud noises, the muffler issue, people dumpster diving, throwing trash bags all over the street. I cannot walk my dogs around the block without trying to stop them from eating trash just blowing around. It has to stop. HPD is our lead role here. Please, what you need to do from the city perspective, from the city council, we need to make sure that we're hitting the streets with the cops, walking around, working with communities and neighbors. And I would, I take offense to what Mr. Masakian just said about my building. I share that building. He is here publicly disparaging it, and this is unacceptable. And it hurts my heart to see my home so just bad-mouthed. And I hope that this kind of personal disparaging testimony will not stand in this community. Thank you.
Wait a minute, I'm not going to get involved in a neighbor versus neighbor thing tonight. So thank you. Any other questions other than?
Chair.
Excuse me, Sharon.
Chair, if I could, I think I have, I should have an opportunity to make a comment. And I, I would ask if you're going to say that, to do it while the person is disparaging the other person, even if it's a member of the public. It's very disrespectful.
Against each other, and I will not continue.
And I would ask whoever's muting me, please do not mute. That's a violation of the sunshine law. It is a violation of the sunshine law to mute any board member.
Then file a complaint.
Public meeting. Chair, if I could, could I, could I make a comment, Chair? Please.
So, so I think I was just recognized. Just want to give a reminder, please, again, if you could say your first and last name. I know a lot of you have been here before, but I'm answering to you. And so also, just for the record, it'd be great if people can remember our first and last name. Thank you so much.
Okay, unless you, unless you are worried about being persecuted by someone, and you don't want your name held, then please don't do that.
Chair, if I could have the floor for a moment, I still would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Greg. This one is done. We're going to, any other questions? We're going to, any other questions for the mayor? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
So Chair, if I could?
Does Representative Waters have a representative here? Thank you.
Well, good evening. Hold up, Fisher, with Chair Waters up it. Good news, there is currently 460,000 proposed in the DDC parks CIP budget for Waikiki Surf Row. Please be advised that March, full city council meeting has been rescheduled for when, from Wednesday, March 27th to Monday, March 25th. Here are a few legislative updates we would like to highlight. Bill five relating to noise control was introduced by Chair Waters in response to community concerns. Bill aims to regulate loud sounds from machines or devices on public property on Oahu to ensure peace and quiet for the residents and visitors. Bill passed first reading, February full council meeting, but was deferred at the House Sustainability and Health Committee. Chair Waters and D4 staff are working with Local Five to address their concerns regarding First Amendment rights. Chair Waters supports freedom of speech. It's important to note that amplifying noise is already illegal. However, Chair Waters and D4 staff are strengthening the verbiage within Bill five to better enforce. You still need community members to testify and support Bill five when it is heard again. At that time, someone from D4 will go ahead and send out an email notification or a call to action to ask for your support. Reso 2430 requests the Department of Parks and Recreation, Facility Maintenance and Design and Construction to provide an update regarding installing and maintaining low flow fixtures at city parks. Revised ordinance upon the Lulu require low fixture, low flow fixtures at city park. However, Chair Waters questioning whether the flow needs to be that low. There are 11 new showers already installed or soon to be installed within Waikiki. The administration is evaluating new and improved camper proof shower. Bill, sorry, Reso 2430 passed out of the Budget Committee and is up for adoption at the March full council meeting. Reso 2431 requests the Honolulu Emergency Services Department and the Budget and Fiscal Services Department to update the city council on the billing of ambulance services. That also passed out of the Budget Committee and is up for adoption at the March full council meeting. Reso 2450 initiates amendment, amendments, the revised charter, the City and County of Honolulu, 1973, as amended, relating to establishing the City and County of Honolulu Department of Ocean Safety. This would create an entirely separate department for city lifeguards that passed first reading at February council meeting and is up for second reading and public hearing at the March full council meeting. I'm available for any questions, but I can take back to Chair Waters.
Okay, thank, thank you. Right, so on Bill five, the noise bill, I know I testified on Zoom. I know Bob and Denise submitted testimony. And so we were all a little concerned when the bill got deferred. But are you suggesting that the bill is probably going to come back again for a future hearing after some discussions with different stakeholders?
Yes, we're actually working with Local Five to address the concerns they have regarding the First Amendment. And then secondly, we wanted to kind of firm up the verbiage to publicly enforce me of.
Okay, so you don't think we've seen the last of this bill?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Chair Waters? Jacob?
Thank you, Chair, Jacob Linsec. I would like to first echo the statement I gave to Nola that we need 24/7, 365 foot patrols, HPD here in Waikiki. I don't know what it's going to take, but we need action at the highest levels, city council, mayor's office. Let's get this done because there are a thousand indignities happening on these streets every day. Second, I would like to, I saw over the past month that the, I think the city council adopted climate change guidance from the Climate Change Commission and that there is an urban heat guidance coming through, if not already approved. I was hoping either you could talk about that tonight or Chair could talk about it when he comes, hopefully next month. And then finally, I did see that Council Chair Waters did oppose SB 3202 about upzoning mixed use density areas. Bill made it through the state senate. It's currently pending in the state house. I would like to convey my respectful disagreement with his position on it. I understand he's been fighting the monster home issue, which is a very valid concern. But I think his opposition in this bill is misplaced. And I just want to register my disagreement with that. We need more upzoning on the island. Thank you.
Sarah?
Actually, I 100% agree with Jacob about the 24/7 foot patrols. I know that there's an issue with HPD. They said there are 420 officers down. And it's going to take, what was it, about, I believe, eight months or so or, you know. Is there any way possible that we don't have HPD foot patrol, but we hire like a private company or we hire someone just to have that visual presence on this?
Not sure if there's requirements with Greg, but I mean.
Greg?
Yes, I just wanted to also ask that Council Chair Waters get more involved in the DPP issues. You know, clearly from the Civil Beat event, we can see that things aren't much better than they were when the mayor took office. And, you know, there's an issue with hiring. Staff is leaving, you know, as quickly as they're getting hired. But again, I'll share my concerns and I've shared this openly with Council Chair Waters. I have concerns with pay to play with DPP, no permits for major projects, elevators that have no operating permits, which to my understanding by the statute is a criminal offense by the company that installed them to never get operating permits. They've been in place since 2019 and 2020. So I ask that the Chair, Council Chair Waters, get more involved in this issue. The mayor gets more involved in this issue. The Director and Deputy Director of DPP get more involved in this issue because this issue is going to be coming more and more to the forefront of discussion. And it needs to be addressed. It's causing harm to our building. It's causing harm to our residents. And it's causing financial harm, but also the, the safety and wellbeing. We had to have the fire department come and extricate, I think, 10 or 12 people out of one of the elevators at one point. And they've never had operating permits. So they didn't get them originally and they've never, you know, every year you have to go on a, they've never got them.
Please summarize. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate if you could get back to me on that. Again, I'm the subdistrict two vice chair, Greg Maseki. Thank you.
I'll be quick. Can you just make a note for Chair Waters to follow up with Chair Finley about the residents' concerns over Tusatla Street?
Thank you so much, Eric. I did write during that report for that question, I did reach out to our constituents director and she said that new street has been identified as needing to be paved and it's included in the, you know, the $15 million that's going to be allocated, we can get back to you as far as scheduling and whatnot. It's kind of packaged as far as when it's scheduled or if I can.
Yeah, that would be great. We had a couple neighbor concerns this evening about it as well. I know after last meeting they came out and they just threw some gravel out, but it made it worse.
Okay, yes, I can go.
Chair?
Yeah, just, just to follow, it should be in the CIP, maybe just check there for repaving. I totally agree. I used to live in Tusatlas. It's never been adequately paved. So maybe just check the CIP, see when it's ready to be paved and you can report next meeting. Thank you.
Others for Chair Waters? Don't see anybody. Thank you for being with us so much. Senator Maury Walkie, have her represent, oh, there he is.
Good evening, board members and members of the public. Charles Izumoto, on behalf of Senator Sharon Maury Walkie. I apologize that she's not here tonight. She's actually at a town hall right now. So, fired to be there. It's actually a town hall and condominium, so it's, hopefully we get some good ideas out of it. I just wanted to go over a few bills that we've introduced. And I know Lou has a report on all of them and I see that they are all listed in the agenda. And I'd hate to brag, but a lot of Senator Maury Walkie's bills are in that list, so, yeah. The first one I want to talk about, though, just briefly, is SB 2347. It's Mr. Deutzman's idea. And what it does is if you commit three misdemeanor violent offenses within five years, that means that you're going to get charged with a felony. The prosecutor has discretion to do that. And I think it's pretty reasonable. You know, someone who's attacking someone physically for three times within a five year span, we kind of want to put this guy in prison. But, you know, we have all these examples of these guys that are running around and just like hitting people and whatever. And they just keep on going through the revolving door and want that, that to end. SB 2532 and HB 2311, those are companion bills. And basically what that does is sometimes there was, there's an obscurity in the law where we have complaints about things being stolen in the common areas of apartment buildings and condos. So like bikes, people will just walk into the common area and just jack a bike in. And so police were charging this with theft and it's, you know, not felony theft, obviously, for the value of the property. But it's burglary if you go into someone's domicile and take something. That's burglary and that's a felony and it should be treated like a felony. So this bill will clarify the law that if you go into in a common area in a condo or apartment or any other dwelling, then that's a felony to take something, even though the thing that they're taking isn't, you know, like $1,000 or something. So that's another bill that we're really proud of. We have a couple on excessive noise that I think Lou will probably talk about. And I'm happy to say that, you might know that Senator Maury Walkie is the focal dealer of the Kapuna Caucus. And we're allowed to introduce five caucus bills and all five of them are still alive. So we're very proud of that and very hopeful. We're making a big focus on long-term care and filling that gap for, for people elderly to be able to continue to live and, you know, have a lot of preventive care so they don't have to always be in the hospital. So those are a few of the bills. I don't want to keep on going on and on if I could because we have this massive list of all our bills that are still alive. But you have it in the report and I can take back any questions.
Questions for Senator Maury Walkie? Greg, you have your hands up.
Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Charles.
Hello.
So first of all, thank, thank you and to the senator for all you're doing for Kapuna Caucus. That's very important. As I, as I mentioned a moment ago, I just became the first vice president of Kakua Council and we work closely with, with your group and also with Kapuna. I would like to ask this town hall this evening, I didn't get the information on it. I got it third party. But the town hall for the condo insurance issues would be something I would have wanted to participate in. And I'm just wondering, and maybe other board members here or other Waikiki residents that might be here this evening. I'm just wondering why it was scheduled on the evening we have our Waikiki board meeting?
So Speaker Psyche's office scheduled that? The date of that, and we just gave them our availability. So that was the date that Speaker scheduled it on. So it wasn't really a Waikiki initiated condo town hall. It's a, as you may know, Kakaako is part of Senator Maury Walkie's district. So she did this with Psyche, who was the coordinator of this event.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions for Senator Maury Walkie? Seeing none, say hi to the senator for us.
Will do. Thanks. And I love the applause. The only neighborhood board that has applause.
And by the way, all of you should have been here last Friday night because only three of us met the senator. Anyway. Representative Tan said he was going to be here. So he's running late. When he comes in, with your permission, I'll bring him up to the stage. Governor's rep, William Oku. William does not seem to be here. Rick Aggett, Waikiki Improvement Association.
I also want to add my appreciation for the senator because we're also working on a project that she inserted into the state budget last year for $650,000 for a small scale sand replenishment. This is in that area that is Diamond Head of the Fort Durusie Groin. So the schedule is, the idea is that this would be a small scale, small pump that would be managed by just a couple of people and pumping sand from the Holakalani Channel back up onto the beach. Anybody who's been in that area knows that it's severely eroded. And there are dozens of people every day that make that, traverse that area from Fort Durusie Groin going Diamond Head and vice versa. And it's extremely dangerous. And yet, so we're looking forward to being in, hopefully being able to get sand back in that area to make it easier to traverse the area and of course to use the beach. So that's a project that is a DLNR. Unfortunately, wheels of government grind slowly. So even though this is a small scale sander replenishment, therefore is supposed to be an expedited permit process, we're not expecting the construction, the pumping of the sand to actually take place until sometime in 2025. Anyway, I just wanted to let the community know about that because it's not really, usually it's not local community members that I see walking there. It's visitors. And it just makes me cringe every time I see somebody traversing the area. So, and the public, right away, which the city manages, has been closed for months because it collapsed. Sidewalk basically fell into the beach, it fell into the ocean. So they did remove the concrete, collapsed there, but it is, there's no way that'll ever get reopened unless we're able to restore the beach. So that's the idea.
Ken, you have a question?
I was just going to point out that I, I make that trip from Hilton Hawaiian Village down to Dukes all the time. And you can't get by that area anymore. It's all taped off, roped off. But it is dangerous. I can tell you because I've fallen there twice.
Me too.
Yeah. It hurts when you hit those rocks, but I'm, I'm, I wish there was some other shorter way to get down to Kalakaua besides, besides the beach. Right now you can't.
Rick, are there any sunsets on the beach coming up?
I may have a very good announcement for you at your next meeting. We're working on that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rick? Seeing none. Thank you for being with us. Okay, we're on board business. For those of you who are wondering why this next item is on the agenda, it is the fault of the chair. I made a mistake on the last month's motion. So Greg, you have a motion to consider placing the resolution regarding the proposed Alawai Canal 180 foot tall tower cable, pedestrian bridge at University Avenue and Kalayamoku on the April agenda.
Yes. So do I have an opportunity to speak first?
What we're going to do is follow the Roberts rules. It says, I need a motion. I need a second. Then we will take testimony from the community and testimony from the board. So you're, we're making the motion?
I make the motion.
Do we have a second? Sarah makes the second. Anybody in the audience has this, would like to say something about this? would like to say something about this? Any, anybody? Anybody on video? Laura Ruby, do you want to say something on this? No?
I, I believe that you have to have the discussion now, if I'm correct. Okay. Well, then wouldn't that be something that Greg would lead off on with a discussion and then other people, whether they're on video or in person, would then be able to comment?
We are taking comments from the audience as to.
The, the audience, Chair, if I could, Chair, the audience doesn't know what, what we're discussing yet. So if I have an opportunity to present uh, what this resolution and what the purpose of it is, then the public should speak because I'm the one presenting it and then the board will speak. That's the way it should go, protocol.
Or the explanation, Greg?
This is the way it's been done at other boards that I participated in.
Yes.
So is it okay if I give a, a quick presentation and then we continue?
We're talking two and a half minutes as is on the agenda. Please make your presentation.
Okay. I think I should get a little more than two and a half minutes, but um, so first I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to present this again. The resolution is a slightly revised version from the one that was on agenda last month. Just like last month's version, it does not mandate an EIS unless one is required by law or regulations. It also supports a modest bridge at a reasonable cost. To remind all here today, we are here for the public and I hope the public has an opportunity to speak. Uh, last month that did not happen and that unfortunately is actually a violation of our sunshine law. Uh, on January eleventh, the Diamond Head Kapahulu Street, uh, excuse me, Kapahulu St. Louis Neighborhood Board adopted a resolution to request an environmental impact statement for the proposed Aloe White Pedestrian Bridge Project. Ten of twelve board members were convinced from presentations and discussions that an EIS is required. In June twenty twenty-one, the McCully Moiliili Neighborhood Board unanimously voted to adopt the resolution opposing the one hundred and eighty foot tall cable state Aloe White Pedestrian Bridge proposal. The Waikiki Special District and the Diamond Head Special District encompass the Aloe White Canal. While the Diamond Head Special District was established in the early nineteen seventies with the principal goal to protect and preserve existing prominent public views of Diamond Head. Waikiki Special District main objective is to promote a Hawaiian sense of place. In the Waikiki Special District Design Guidelines, it states, "A great contributor to our sense of place and quality of life is the variety and quality of public views." Waikiki has a number of significant vistas or landmarks, the mountains and the ocean that are internationally known and contribute to the magic of Waikiki. Views of Diamond Head from as many public vantage points as possible, but especially from Aloe White Boulevard and the Punch Bowl lookout. Accordingly, the view of Diamond Head from the Aloe White Boulevard between McCully Street and Kapahulu Ave is identified as a significant public view of a Waikiki landmark cited in the Land Use Ordinance. Also per the Land Use Ordinance, development should preserve, maintain and enhance these views whenever possible. I am probably.
Please summarize, you've gone beyond two and a half minutes.
Okay, if I could, um, eight years ago, I'll summarize this. Eight years ago, our board opposed a project development and two of our current board members raised concerns about setting precedent by allowing a height exemption. This height exemption was twenty-five feet, which is what the Waikiki Special District is for this particular location. The Diamond Head District is zero. It was sound judgment then to oppose that project. It was, I think, a three hundred and fifty foot project and it was a unanimous vote. It was back in twenty fifteen. I asked, um, this board, if I could, to summarize, I asked this board for the reasons I just mentioned that I urge the members of this board to give this resolution a further discussion so we can move forward and let the public speak on this. It is a very important resolution. Thank you.
Okay, we've had the explanation. Do we have comments from the, from the audience? Laura Ruby wants to comment. Again, we have two and a half minutes.
Uh, yes, um, thank you very much. Um, we are all about community. We want to further the best for the community. And here are some things to consider. Um, many, many EISs are done throughout our whole community. And those are only for the good of the, the public, the people who are, live where they're being done and the people who care about their particular neighborhood or environment. And that is, um, uh, the, uh, physical, cultural, historical and human environments uh, that are affected by anything that might be proposed. And that has to do with all of the big condominiums that are going in or the, the proposal or, or bridge or whatever. And, and furthermore, uh, this particular bridge has a huge, huge price tag on it of which the federal government has picked up some of it, but the city and county have to pick up more and this is to lower, the idea is why should there be any more money contributed by the city and county? Because that would effectively stop the, um, bridge going ahead until the EIS is, um, uh, put in place. And, um, it would be a lower, the, the main thing is the tax dollars are ours. We do not need to spend something that's ninety-three or sixty-three million. And instead, a, a twenty-some million dollars modest low bridge would be the best answer to something like that. And then, um, the, um, you know, the various things from your side of the neighborhood is the reduction of a lane that's going to happen in, on Aloe White Boulevard. That means your transportation is going to be jammed up a bit. And if you happen to look at the, um, Aloe White, um, Park uh, on Saturday or Sunday, you will see hundreds and hundreds of Pacific Islanders that are out enjoying in the fa, with families and, um, island groups playing. The kids run across and run around and play and they just have a very good time. You know that that's not going to happen if there are, as proposed, uh, fifteen hundred to four thousand strangers coming across the bridge. The same would be true. About the Aloe White School, uh, same would be true about this Aloe White School of parents and kids who, when they leave school in the afternoon, they run across to the, the playground and they're all playing in a very happy way. So consider the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other people from the audience? There's no other discussion from the audience. I will take board discussion. Sarah?
I think we have some confusion here. Um, biggest thing is, I, I actually love that the, this board approved the twenty sixteen resolution. It was a modest bridge. It didn't, and then unfortunately, this past year, the bridge changed. They added a twenty million dollar, eighteen story tall Vegas style lit all night cement structure. So the resolution, I think, Lou had mentioned before that he's willing to work with it. It's, it's basically just a refreshing that twenty sixteen resolution because unfortunately, uh, for example, I believe, uh, Mr. Merritt was on PBS and he's talking about how this board had approved that resolution for, for the bridge. However, saying that, people assume it's the bridge currently as designed, that we approve the big huge Vegas style little night. And so it'd be good to have a resolution. Let's just take the EIS out. That, that's an issue. Let's just take it out. That could be amended. Um, I just would like the board to approve the bridge. I am for, I am for the bridge, but without the twenty million dollar addition. And that twenty million dollars, we could use it to fill pot holes. We could use it to like re-strike the street. We could use it to make better bike lanes. There's a lot of things we could do with twenty million dollars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, as Sarah says, you know, I mean, the idea is to, was to try to look at the issue. I mean, this board, this board has clearly voted that we want a bridge and we still want a bridge. I'm against this resolution as drafted for similar reasons that I was against the one that we voted on a couple of months ago. And I think, I was online last month, so I didn't get a chance to really speak. And I know there was a lot of discussion between Jeff and Greg about, is, does this call for an EIS or does it call for an EIS? And I think you, you were kind of both right and, and both incorrect, the way, the way I analyze it. It's true that this doesn't say the board wants an EIS. So Greg's right about that. But what this is, is just sort of a cute, clever, half-assed, the backdoor, watered down version of the same resolution. And I think that's, and I think to Greg, I think that's why you're seeing the board so fed up with this issue. I don't know how many times I suggested to Sarah and to Greg that if you wanted to come in with a, with a clean resolution that says the board wants a smaller bridge, we'd probably all vote for that. But some guys just don't like to take no for an answer apparently. And so you keep coming back with the same thing. And so, and you have language in here about, well, you don't really need the bridge because you could shelter in place. And you really should have an EIS and maybe you'll have an EIS. I think that the reason the board voted this down is because they're fed up with, with the whole concept of, of doing the EIS. We very clearly voted against that. So if somebody ever wants to put something on the agenda that's a one paragraph thing that says, we want a smaller bridge, I would vote for that and I think we'd all vote for that. But the language as it's written, and this is no disrespect to Laura, I do respect her opinion, but I mean, she clearly doesn't want the bridge. So I understand that. So the tenor of this is to do that and EIS is certainly going to delay this thing by years. The price tag may be more than it was supposed to be, but that's not really our issue. The, the issue we're trying to focus on is the size and the sculpt of the bridge. And so I, I would vote against adding this to, to the, uh, agenda for next.
Sarah, you've already had a chance to talk. I'm sorry. Okay, Greg, you can, uh, now that you have presented this, go ahead and, uh.
Thank you, Chair. Um, again, I, I'd ask for a little bit more decorum at our meeting. It seems like there's, there's enough personal attacks this evening. I'm not feeling very well, by the way. My voice is off, as you can, you can tell I'm not there this evening because I'm not feeling well and I've had quite a bit of a cough. I'm just recovering from it. So I would ask, um, that the, the derogatory comments need to stop. The personal attacks need to stop. I, I'm really tired of it. The resolution was reviewed by a Senator's office and they said it hit all the points. I revised it slightly to make it a little shorter to get it on three pages. It's actually not three full pages because half, more than half a page is submitting it to different people. It's not requiring an EIS. It's just stating an EIS would be required if required by law. If, if a requirement for an EIS is there by statute, by chapter, by regulation, then an EIS would be needed. We would adopt that, you know, support. It is supporting a modest bridge. And, um, just to clarify the cost, I think it's sixty, between sixty-five, sixty-eight million. So I know there was some millions mentioned a moment ago. The twenty sixteen resolution that this, the former Waikiki Neighborhood Board passed or adopted was for an eleven to fifteen million dollar bridge, from what I recall. And I'm, I'm not trying to pass anything that's sneaky or different. These comments are coming from the public, from Miss Ruby, from others, reviewed by, uh, legislators and fully supportive of, of these comments. Hit, uh, my, my feedback was you hit all the points. So if I'm hitting them in the public's realm and with our legislators, I don't understand why it's so confusing to this board uh, what you're reading. You know, we should be respecting the public. Again, twenty-five feet is the limit for the Waikiki Special District. The Diamond Head Special District is zero feet. How do we get, right now it's, I guess, at a hundred and seventy with the amendment that they're doing or the revision? How do we get to that? You can't. So.
Please summarize, sir.
That's fine. Um, you can't get to that, Chair. You can't get to that, board members. And I would ask you to just look at this from a reasonable perspective. We just want to have it for a further discussion. Get some other people. We'll have maybe other legislators. I'd like to have Senator Morawaki and Rep Tam also speak on it at the next meeting. I appreciate it if you could respect that to get it on for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Catherine? Catherine, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to remind you that this is the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. It is not the Moiliili. It is not Miss Ruby's board. It is not Senator Ihara, who you've contacted about our meeting tonight, Greg. And I find this constant representing the same thing offensive. We voted, we voted, we've made our feelings known. Greg, you were elected to represent Waikiki, not Diamond Head, not Moiliili or all the other boards that you quoted. And I suggest you remember that. Now, I would not vote for this because it's only going to further it. This has gone back so many years where so many other board members before you were on the board already had made votes that should stand. You may not agree with it, but that doesn't give you the right to disparage it. Thank you.
I have Daisy Marai.
Daisy? Next, Chair. Um, yes, correct. It is the Waikiki Board, but don't forget it affects everyone. Waikiki would really be affected because don't forget, city wants to do a lot more things for Waikiki to make it difficult for people traveling in and out through Waikiki and beyond. The bridge would cost sixty-three million. That's only for one bridge. What happens if the other communities also want a nice towering bridge? Same thing, just paying for it with your federal and city fees. So in the, and this is taxpayers is paying, getting the burden of it. It may look nice, but then the city took their time in deciding on what everyone did. No one in the community had the chance to vote on it. So just to let you know, the bridge may be nice, but then is it functional for all communities? Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy. Okay, I believe I only need to let people speak once, but Sharon, Sarah, I'll let you have a few more minutes.
Actually, I just wanted to follow up because I know that you had signed, um, I believe, Mr. Merritt's to, um, review that EIS. We actually never heard a report. Maybe if we address those issues, um, then it won't be an issue and it'll move forward. And I would love to work with Lou and have a resolution that actually supports the bridge that you had approved in twenty sixteen. So, um, that's.
Okay, I have had testimony from everybody at least once.
Um, excuse me, sir. Uh, there needs to be a correction. Chair, there needs to be a correction in what was just said. It would just take me a second. Can you, can you hear me?
Call for the question.
Louis, Louis misstated something. I have never been entirely against the bridge. This is what I have proposed many times over, which is a small modest bridge. And it would be set up in other places. You notice that this is Banff, Dublin, this is our own Alanaio. This is, um, all of, um, Iowa City. All of those are all modest, small bridges which should be considered in this larger picture. So I'm sorry, Louis, but you've misstated my position.
Yes, yes, you are, you are correct. And I mean, you have been clear that you would support a modest bridge. Yes.
Yeah, a modest bridge, we would have never had this thought at all if it had been a modest bridge. It was proposed.
I think we would all support. That's what I'm trying to say. We would all support a more scaled down bridge, but it's all this, it's all the extraneous thing.
That's right.
Chair, if I could just make one additional comment, I think.
Call for the question.
Chair, if I could, um, make one additional comment.
I believe the question has been called.
The call, the question again was improperly used at the last board meeting and I've got an opinion from OIP on that. It's very unfortunate that you guys try to subvert, uh, and not allow people to speak and that's very unfair. If I could make a comment, please.
Thank you.
Give me one moment, please.
I, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I show of hands, all in favor.
Out of respect, give me a moment to speak.
Uh, no, you may not right now. So you have not been recognized, so.
Hey, um, Jillian? Oh, call the question? We need, we need both, call the question I need. Okay. Oh, um. So we got Catherine to move to call the question and Daniel to call the question. Is that correct? Second, yeah. Sorry. Okay. Uh, going back to this, um, Michael? Yes. Uh, Lisa? Call the question, just see, and discuss. Sorry, I'll direct him. Okay. Louis. Melissa. Robert. Catherine.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yeah.
Ken.
Yeah.
Greg.
No.
Mark. Ted. Sarah. Get their team, yes. One no, and one abstained, it was adopted to call the question.
We have the original motion on the floor. It has been made, and second, would you care to read them?
Okay, motion is to consider placing the resolution regarding the proposed Alaik now hundred eighty-foot tall tower, pedestrian bridge at University Avenue in Alaik Moku on April 2024, regular Waikiki schedule meeting agenda. Please say yes, no, or abstain if you want to consider this to be on the agenda. Okay, Jillian. Shotaro. Louis. Catherine.
So if I vote no, that means it will not appear on the agenda?
Yes.
So, no.
Daniel. Ken. Jeff. Greg.
Yes.
Mark. Ted. And Sarah. And the motion passed, to not to consider.
Okay, moving on to legislation update, Vice Chair Erdechek.
Okay, thank you. Well, well, when we last met, it was bill introduction deadline, and then I think I sent you out in between the updates for first lateral and for first decking and crossover. A lot of the bills are no longer there, but some of them are. I don't really have any additional recommendations in terms of what we should be supporting or opposing. I mean, at the last, at the last meeting, we voted to support the crime bill, and, and that's still going. Is that twenty-seven thirty-seven, John? Twenty-three forty-seven, the crime bill, and so we've testified on that. We voted to endorse all the noise bills, and I know that there was a noisy muffler bill was heard today. So when I look at what's, there's a lot of condo bills here, but I think a lot of them are just going to go to LRB, which I think, I think would make sense. So I personally don't see anything else on here that I think we really need to vote on tonight, get involved, but members may feel differently, and members, and that's why the list was sent out to you folks, because it's not, not my decision, it's not my committee. So I'm just here to kind of give you the information, so that you could, if any, if anybody on the board wants to take a position on a particular issue, then I think this would be the time to raise that issue, and we can have a discussion. Greg? Greg?
Yeah, so, one thing I wanted to point out, the way our legislation is on agenda, it's something that is a concern, because we, we have to be compliant, so that the public understands what the intent of what we're putting on the agenda is. You know, we're putting a lot of information regarding legislation. In a discussion I had with OIP, and just in general, on the agenda from last month, this was looked at, and the opinion of OIP is that it's, it wasn't compliant in February to the sunshine law for, for enough information for the public, for disclosure.
I don't, I don't know anything about that. I mean, as far as I know, it.
So if I could just finish the thought, and so, I don't know, you know, in this case, in this month, looking at it, it looked in a similar manner. I think the point is, when you're placing something on agenda, you need to be clear what the intent of it is. So you're putting a lot of different legislation, a lot of bills. If we're going to be making a decision on supporting or not, it should say, the board will make decisions to support or not support the following bills, or the following categories of bills. But I don't see that, and it wasn't there in February, and that's the concern, sure.
Well, I'm looking at the March agenda, and it lists a lot of topics and a lot of bills, so, and I know that the agenda was put together in coordination with the neighborhood commission, and so I think that it clearly states that, that those are the bills that are on the agenda, so that that does give notice to the public that we might be taking action on, to support or oppose in any one of those bills. So as far as I know, if you've done an opinion from OIP, that's news to me. I mean, I haven't, plus, if in fact my recommendation holds that we don't take any action on any of those items, then even if theoretically you were correct, that somehow the notice was flawed, if no action was taken, then there's no violation of the sunshine law anyway, because the sunshine law is only designed to, to prevent action from really being taken in the actions. So I think for both of those reasons, I don't think, I don't think your point.
There has been testimony, Vice Chair, there has been testimony, there's been testimony.
Who has the floor, Chair?
If I could just to correct, point of correction.
Chair, I'd like to ask who you've recognized to have the floor. There seems to be a back and forth, and you need to recognize someone to have the floor.
Point of correction, Chair.
Yes.
Point of correction, Chair. just said. That's all I'm trying to do, make a point of correction. So he said that nothing's been done, but there's been public testimony given by our chair on some of the measures from last month, that we had decided to go forward on crime and noise.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to say.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Chair, there's, there's no motion on the table.
Move this around, next to recognize is Daniel.
Okay, so there's no motion on the table?
No.
So you're, are you just allowing informal discussion?
The whole point of bringing this information up was to get the feeling from the board, which bills they feel are very important, and we should take a position on. We have sent out all kinds of information to the board members. Anybody who wants to know what's going on with the bill can certainly go to the legislature website and get the latest information on each of these bills. I don't think it's our job to publish thousand pages of information on an agenda. So, yes.
I'm going to change the subject and just bring up House Bill 2081, transient accommodations tax, minimum tax increase. This is only for the transient accommodations tax rate, which greatly affects those of us that have small businesses doing short-term rentals. It's a handful of buildings competing with the hotels. We already pay about nineteen percent in taxes for DLNR natural resources general fund, and they want to raise it to fifty dollars levied for each transient accommodation or resort time shore vacation unit. I know there's a few of us on this board that own short-term rentals, vacation rentals, it greatly affects Waikiki, and I just think that's maybe a bill that we should consider.
What was the number on that bill again?
Two zero eight one. They're asking the short-term rental owners to pay, you know, all these taxes.
Are you suggesting that we should be opposed to that, or?
Yes, opposed.
Okay, I mean, that's a very interesting subject, and.
We're already paying eighteen, nineteen percent, they're asking to raise the TA tax and require a minimum fifty-dollar tax to be levied for each one.
Right, this is the, right, the green fee that would, that would then go to fund natural resource protection and things like that, right? So I mean, there's, there would, I mean, okay. No, it's, but it goes, but it goes to the general fund, and then, and then, and then it would be appropriated to DLNR, so that they could use it for natural resource protection.
And this TA tax is already ten percent.
You know, I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I mean, there's a lot of people who are for it, there's a lot of people who are against it, so I think that's a legitimate topic for discussion. Well, so you think we should oppose it? Okay, you want to make a motion, Melissa?
Okay, sure, I'll make a motion to oppose House Bill two zero eight one.
Anybody who second that? Anybody, anybody else want to speak? Jacob?
Aloha, Jacob, one sec. Melissa's absolutely right, taxes are way too high in Hawaii, and, and we should not be trying to raise them even higher, we're uncompetitive economically, and we shouldn't be hurting small businesses trying to earn a living out here. And I do have a question to pose to the Chair. If the board decides to make a resolution supporting this, who is authorized to provide public testimony on behalf of, on behalf of the board for legislation? There are concerns that some are misrepresenting the board's support and giving outlandish public testimony, and to keep the reputation and integrity of the board intact, who is specifically allowed to speak on behalf of the board when approved to do so? Thank you.
Historically, the Chair has been able to provide testimony. If we vote on something and agree to support it, I don't see any reason why any board member can not participate in that. If we are against something or for something, and, and you disagree with the board, you can always disagree as an individual. So, yes. Yep, Sarah.
Sorry, I'm, I don't know much about this, I have a quick question. So it says that they're going to increase the transient accommodation tax at ten point two five. Is, what's the accommodation tax rate for like hotels and such? Ten point five? So, so they're basically going to charge like B and Bs the same as they charge hotels, right? Same tax? Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
They already charge the same taxes, they just want to increase the tax. And already, city and county just added three percent as of COVID. So they took the ten and a quarter percent and added another three percent to city and county, and now they want to increase again, plus additional fees.
Just hotels, or is it? Could you?
All short-term vacation rentals, anybody less than a hundred and eight days. So that does apply to thirty-day rentals and all the nightly and weekly Airbnb legally zone Waikiki problems.
So are, so are the tax rates lower for what, for the hotels, or like, are they the same? I just want to clarify that.
The same across the board.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to.
I have mixed feelings. I mean, I could probably respectfully vote in a different way than you would, at least, at least at the moment. I mean, I think that, especially as residents of Waikiki, I think that we want all the natural resource protection that we can possibly have, and I think that additional funding, especially because of things like, and Neptam is here, he can probably speak to that, but because of, the legislature is not going to be doing out a lot of extra cash because of all the money that the Maui wildfires are taking, I think that while this is a, a fee increase, the fee is applied to visitors, and so I think it may impact them more than it's going to impact us. And so I, and at the same time, that money would go to benefit things like resource protection, which would help the visitor experience, and which would also enhance the quality of life for people like us who live here. So I'm not so sure that I'm against this. I wasn't prepared to really think about it and vote on it tonight, but if I had to take a vote, I think I'd probably vote the other way.
I, on the other hand, remember TAT, that's what they started to build the convention center at three percent. And every year, it's just gone up and up, and mostly into the general fund, even though they say, we're going to spend it on this. Once it gets in the general fund, it's gone, aloha, it's, it's history. So is there any other comments on twenty-eight? On twenty-eight one House Bill? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to vote against it, but we'll take a vote now, so please. Okay, a yes opposes the House Bill twenty-eight one, a no supports it. If that's not confusing enough, I don't know what really is.
Okay, motion to oppose House Bill two oh eight one. Okay, Jillian. Robert, oh wait, Lisa. Michael, sorry. Shotaro. Robert. Catherine.
Aye.
Ken. Jeffrey. Greg.
Abstained.
Ted. And Sarah. Eleven, yes, zero no's, and four abstained, and the motion was adopted.
I, I would like to make the motion, since Lou's in charge of this, to support Senate Bill twenty-seven twenty-six and House Bill eighteen fourteen, which are condominium bills. The way the bills are written now, the legislature wants to send condominium actions, a lot of them, to the Legislative Reference Bureau. If you're not familiar with the legislature, they have some very smart people over there who do research before the legislature takes actions on bills that they're worried about. Is that, is that correct, Lou?
LRB can look at how other states handle these kinds of issues, yes. I mean, that, that's the kind of thing that they would be equipped to do, and I think that's the first of what they're getting at.
Okay, so it's, I made the motion to support Senate Bill twenty-seven twenty-six and House Bill eighteen fourteen. Second with Daniel. Any further discussion on those two bills?
Thank you, I didn't hear anything. So as I, I said earlier, because of my concern, excuse me, I'm going to lose my voice, because of my concern with the sunshine law, and the fact that I, I don't fully believe the public understands what we're doing with the way this is on agenda, I'm going to continue to abstain, but I would like to make a comment regarding the. regarding the Legislative Research Bureau and that one specific bill, that it's just kicking the can down the road. Right now, they've got twenty-twenty-six as a date for a report. They need action now. And I've co-authored multiple bills this year, three bills that were introduced to six bills with companion bills. And the only thing that's going to solve the problem is an embezzlement for the state to have authority to help regulate what's going on. There's a lot of Wild West out there with a lot of misconduct. So again, I'm intending to abstain because I don't feel that the way this is on our agenda is proper, but we'll, we'll revisit that later. Thank you.
Any other discussion on these two bills? Seeing none, we'll take a vote.
Uh, when I say your name, please say yes, no, or abstain. Okay. Oh, wait, we're supporting bills, Senate Bill two seven, two six and HB one eight, one four.
Which states what?
Yes. Yep. Okay, uh, Jillian. Uh, Michael. Uh, Lisa. Shotaro. Melissa. Melissa. Robert. Catherine.
I am not clear on what we're voting on here.
Oh, uh, to support Senate Bill two seven, two six and House Bill one eight, one four.
I understand that, but I don't want to know what the bills say.
Uh, the bills take questions about condominium law and refer it to the Legislative Reference Bureau for research. And then they go back to the legislature with their recommendations.
And if we vote yea on this, what does that indicate?
If we're voting in favor of that, then the, we can support those two bills. We vote no, then we can't.
Thank you. Yes.
Daniel? Okay, and yes. Uh, Jeff? Greg?
Abstain.
Uh, Mark? Uh, Chad? And Sarah? Okay, that's fourteen yes, one abstain, the motion was adopted.
Do we have any other bills? Anybody would like to support or oppose? Hooray! And you're just in time to make your presentation, I guess, right?
Because while you guys are on the topic, I might as well pitch two bills.
You're the perfect guy to be talking about.
So, thank you so much. I probably have my newsletter already, but there are two bills that I really want to bring to your attention right now. We just had a condominium town hall about the skyrocket insurance rates and that in turn leads to your maintenance fees going up. A little bit history behind it, it, the same thing has happened after Hurricane Iniki back in nineteen ninety-two. It's happening now because the Lahaina wildfires. It's become almost really risky for a lot of the insurance companies to really stay in the market. And there are two bills that the legislature is trying to do to pass to address this issue. The first one is House Bill twenty-six, eighty-six. That's House Bill twenty-eight, six, eighty-six and SB thirty-two, forty-two. They're companion bills, but it expands coverage written by the Hawaii Property Insurance Association to start covering condominiums.
Are they on our agenda?
I don't know, I don't see it.
Huh? Well.
I, I didn't put it in my newsletter, but I put it in my notes that I'm reading right now.
Well, I think, I think there may be, there may be an issue that within having the sunshine law discussion, there's those that are on, that I think we, that are, that are, that are, that are, that are not, that are, that are.
Yeah.
But I think it would be good to do it, or nonetheless.
Yeah, I'll bring it to you. Yeah, this is a bill that Speaker Psaki Scott Nishimoto and I have been working on. It basically redoes what we've done after Hurricane Iniki to address those. Apparently it's been happening across the country. Hawaii now is just catching up to the rest of them. So we are going to start a dialogue with our federal counterparts because it looks like it's going into some antitrust laws too. But the second thing it does, it restarts and expands coverage for the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund so that it gives the insurance companies some cover so that they can, you know, keep their property place, I mean, property insurance low. Um, it includes fundings from insurance premium assessments, mortgage record, recognition fees, convenience taxes and other sources to recognize that it's not just insurance issues or societal issues. And, you know, so that is that bill. Two, six, eight, six, yes, House Bill two, six, eight, six. Two, six, eight, six. House Bill two, six, eight, six. Um, I know the Board is probably not going to take a position on it right now, but I hope that individually you can submit testimony in support of it. Unfortunately, I don't have the bill bill in front of me, but the town, the town hall that we just had was recorded. And when it's finally formatted in its form, we will be able to distribute it out to you. Um, sorry it happened on tonight when we had a neighborhood board and we really had to work around the schedule of our, the experts that we had to invite. The second bill is a House Bill twenty-eight, oh, one. Or Senate Bill twenty-seven, twenty-seven. So this bill creates an innovative loan program to cover some of the plumbing and piping issues that often drives up the maintenance fees in our condominium at a low interest rate.
Chair, I'll make a motion to support Senate Bill twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
I, I heard a motion, but I didn't hear what it was.
I make a motion to support Senate Bill twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Is there a second? Second, ten seconds.
We, sir, sir, I, I, it's not on the agenda, so I actually really support these bills, I think they're.
It is on the agenda.
Oh.
Okay. So any further discussion on Bill twenty-seven, twenty-seven? What's that, Senate Bill? No further discussion on twenty-seven, twenty-seven? Could you take? How about we just do a show of hands on this one? So all in favor? Any opposed? I saw, John, did you guys, uh, uh, did you guys vote in favor? Everyone? Any opposed? Catherine's opposed.
No.
No, no, she's in.
Chair, this is Greg, I abstain for the same reason I gave before.
Okay. Any other bills that we want to work on tonight? If not, then we give Adrian a, a chance to do his report? Other than that?
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Greg, did you have another bill you wanted to support or oppose?
Uh, no, 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 I accidentally put my hand back up, I'm just trying to lower it, so.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Representative.
Thank you. Not to down the excitement, but feral chickens. Um, it's been an issue and we have had in summer complaints about it. The idea, right, the recommendation has always been to call the city's pest control vendor directly at eight oh eight four, five, six, seven, seven, one, seven. Or you can make an online request for service at, I think, sandwich aisles dot com. And that's the city's pest control vendor. Um, the second thing is that we've gotten a lot of complaints about the noise coming out of Palhama Place, which is right next to the Prince Hotel. So we've worked with the vendors and the owner of that area and they've taken some incredible steps to mitigate the noise, such as diverting the stage away from the condominiums. They have banned drums, they are closely monitoring their bass guitar levels. They've also installed tents so that the music is contained within. And these tents are noise dampening too. So it is meant to actually contain the music within. And if there are any future complaints, feel free to contact our office and we can work directly with the owner of the area. Um, the second thing that I will talk about is, I don't know if you guys had House Bill twenty-sixty-five, it's the noise camera bill. Okay, perfect. Well, it passed out of the Senate Transportation Committee today. So, hooray. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Questions? Greg, would you have a question for Representative?
Yeah, just very, very quickly, because I'm seeing we're running out of time and I want the other presenter to be able to present. Hi, Rep Tam, I just wanted to comment, the condo insurance costs aren't specifically and solely driven by the Maui fires. When I purchased my condo in twenty nineteen, the entire insurance cost for the building, DNO, everything, was about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, last year, at the beginning of, you know, January, when it started, December, January, December of the previous year or January of last year, the rate was over five hundred and fifty thousand, we're paying over six hundred thousand now. So the Maui fires had nothing to do with it. There's other issues regarding deferred maintenance and other things that are contributing. So I'll, I'll reach out to you more, we're going to be having an insurance discussion at Kukua Council, our general membership meeting, I'm putting a program together. So I'll reach out to you, maybe there's another opportunity there to, to speak. Thank you.
Oh yeah, I'm not saying that the Lahaina fires are the only reason why. It is that it has been going on for a while due to, you know, natural disasters. It's been going on, on the mainland for a while now, we are just catching them. I'm just saying that the Maui Lahaina fires are the reason why there's such a dramatic increase.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Miku, we are, we are very short on time, could you give us about ten minutes of your presentation and? We've been trying to do this for three months, I think.
All right, so aloha mai kako, I'm Dr. Miku Lenintine. I am the coordinator for Serene, the Center for Resilient Neighborhoods. And just thank you so much for everyone sticking around and for inviting me back. Thank you, Greg, Chair members and community members. So I have a pretty comprehensive presentation and I put the links into the chat, so everyone online should have it and you guys will have it. But also, I'm going to put these at the back of the room. So if you want to sign up for more info, get things emailed to you or use your phone to get the QR code, you'll be able to look through it a little bit more. So I'm just really going to hit some highlights. So it's not our first time coming here. Just really quickly about Serene, we're a relatively new community-based research center out of Kapulani Community College. We focus on student leadership award programs, but then also supporting the network of resilience hubs across Oahu. And it's just a quick picture, we do all different kind of community engagement in addition to the report that I'm really updating you on tonight. We do work with all different ages. Our big focus is, of course, looking at response and supporting response and emergency preparedness for natural disaster, but also focused more on blue sky preparedness, setting up programs in place to support resilience even in non-emergency times. We are taking the approach, more of a network approach to resilience hubs, so it's not just one place, it's a network of different hubs. And I have the update for the report for you guys tonight. So I've been working on this for quite some time. This report has a lot of information in it, we actually hosted two workshops right here at the Waikiki Community Center that has been an awesome partner in this project. And there's a, all the data is available on that report again. So just really quickly, this is based on the Ola Resilience Strategy, identified forty-four different actions to support more resilient Oahu. The fifteenth of those forty-four actions is to develop a network of resilience hubs. This is the, this is the shorthand project definition, a trusted gathering place, trusted gathering place. You can see there's a hub and spoke model, concept of hubs. So you have a particular location, it's connected to all different aid organizations, working government agency, those are the spokes, and then the hubs support each other in this broader network. This is a very large definition that came out of a number of community engagements, I'll talk about those in a minute. But just to highlight, just for you to take away, what is a resilience hub? And again, you can read more in the report. It's a trusted gathering place, operating both in non-emergency and emergency times, utilizing culturally informed strategies and is operating together as a network. So again, I'll let you guys look at this definition a little bit more. Put this slide up because there's a lot of confusion about what a hub is, is a hub a shelter? How does that work with a sheltering system? For the most part, resilience hubs are meant to be supplemental to the Department of Emergency Management Shelter System. So they can provide short-term sheltering as needed, but they're not necessarily a huge space with a bunch of beds. We're talking about hurricanes coming, you have to shelter in place in your home. Say you've got your food, you've got your go-kit, you're stuck in your home though, and you run out of supplies or you need to refrigeration for medicines. That's what these hubs are for, right? So just a little bit different. This is a slide we used with Kiki, but it's really useful. So it's a whole bunch of different things, it's not just a giant shelter. It can be, it can be a pop-up, it can be, it can be a shipping container filled with non-perishable food, it's set up, ready to go, right? So it can be all different things. And it's also more than just brick and mortar. We're exploring where Inas bases, inherited sites fit into this network of hubs for so many different reasons to support resilience. The original kickoff project, again, I mentioned, is called Action Fifteen. So the goals were to develop partnership with different community organizations, identify locations and then work directly with community to identify needs. This is the timeline, so Action Fifteen was what it was called when we were working with the city and county, because that was the fifteenth action, right? We're now kind of shifting to calling it the Oahu Resilient Hubs Project. You can see in the teal, the light color behind me, these are all the different steps that we took with the city and county. And now they're moving into more of an advisory position as Serene takes the lead in convening the community to create, we're working on creating an advisory council and a broader learning community to support these hubs as they set up. So we worked with, presenting and working with neighborhood boards across the island, working with different networks, the Climate Resilience Network, the Cross-Island Community Resilience Network, as many partners as we can find. And if you haven't heard of this yet and you do want to talk to me, please, please contact me. A, a number of different engagements. Again, I'm just breezing through this, so we worked really closely with our different hosts. This is the most recent one that we had, working with neighborhood board number eight at the Moili, Eli and Poli neighborhood, hosted the Japanese Cultural Center. We're starting to go back now and actually get really drilled down into neighborhood scale. We're talking to nice neighborhoods, we're talking to Honolulu Art Museum. Some quick overview of main themes. Saw incredible intergenerational learning. So because we're at Kapulani Community College, we have the youth that can be part of this project. That's been huge, high levels of engagement, high levels of people learning how to use these maps, people learning how to do planning in their own communities. It's the communities that identified priorities, we had over two hundred and fifty neighborhood scale priorities identified. scale priorities identified, so that's really powerful. So we have a lot of these next steps documented and available. This is one of our big take-home, over a hundred and fifty-six locations identified across the island, every time I do this presentation, I have another group come up and say we want to be a hub. This is identified by the community, so we're working with community level. And the Lahaina fire actually happened at the end of the project, and so uh, we were, we went back to our partners and added in their concerns and uh, brought in new concerns for heat and fire resilience as part of the planning. And I have a number of summarized next steps, again, it's all in the report, so I won't really be able to kind of go through them, I'll just flip through the slides to give you the overview. So working on infrastructure, right, so you've got to harden the infrastructure themselves. We have a whole slew of specific needs that need happen to support these hubs as the buildings themselves um, become more resilient. Partnership development. Establishing this network and learning community. Focusing on the cultural outreach aspect of this. How to support in blue skies, right, non-emergency capacity building. And then the gray skies coordination. Again, you guys will get to look through this one, but I'm just going through. And then we're also working with um, the coordinators of the different hub networks on each of the islands. So um, Maui has its own system, there's vibrant Hawaii on Big Island, they have their own system, we're all starting to work together, um, to kind of learn from each other. Okay, and there's so much that we're doing and a lot more specific things, but the main things for you all are we're working on forming our steering committee, a community advisory council to guide the process, and the development of hub learning community that would look like monthly Zoom meetings with our kind of main people from across the island coming in, and then having subject matter experts present, we'll have working groups, things like that. So at this point, it's really, um, read the report, contact me, and then if you want to sign up for more info, if you want to join um, the community advisory council, would be really, really awesome to have someone from neighborhood board or any active neighborhood leaders. I think we are going to be focusing specifically on Kai Muki for a little while, but there's overlap into this area, uh, we got a grant working with Department of Education to put solar panels on Kai Muki Middle School, so we're working, that's going to be kind of a pilot, but there's a lot more going on across the island right now.
Sorry to rush you so much.
We could add it to the share drive, though. So you can access it back.
Thank you. Uh, actually, I I think that if you have a chance, attend the full presentation on this. Uh, I watched it on O'Leal, I believe it was, and it's about an hour and a half that really will give you an idea of what they're really getting into and about water flowing over, anyway, but thank you, Doctor, for being with us tonight, we really appreciate you sitting out here since five o'clock waiting to talk, so thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. We'll, we'll keep coming back, sharing updates, sending our students as well, yeah.
Uh, that expires our time, I apologize for letting the meeting get away from me, please help us put away the tables and chairs, and see you next month.